We're going to go ahead and start the County of Monterey Planning Commission meeting of June 11, 2025. So with that, can we call the, I'm sorry, can we do the Pledge of Allegiance? And then Commissioner Hartzell, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you.
Hi. I'm the United States of America and the United Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, in this whole liberty and justice.
Thank you. Now can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Gomez?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Work?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Commissioner Hartzell?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Here.
Commissioner Monsalve is not present. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And I guess this would be the place to let the public know how they would be able to communicate with the commission either via Zoom or via emails.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Thanks for joining us today for the Planning Commission meeting. As we get our slide shared on screen, for individuals who are participating in today's Planning Commission meeting remotely, there are multiple ways in which you can participate during portions of public comment in today's meeting. You can participate in public comment from your Zoom platform by raising your hand during public comment, by clicking at the bottom of your screen, the raise hand icon. On a mobile or landline phone, you can raise and lower your hand by pressing star nine. Also, you can participate by sending an email to PChearingcomments@countyofmonterey.gov. This email is on today's agenda. It is monitored actively during the meeting, but now that the meeting's begun, there's, we can't guarantee that we capture all comments at that email address, but we do monitor it actively. Members of the public who are granted permission during the public comment period to speak, you'll be granted permission when the chairperson acknowledges you. And at that time, on your Zoom platform, you can mute and unmute at the bottom of your screen by pressing the icon that looks like a microphone. And on your phone, you can mute and unmute by pressing star six. Thank you. Also today, the Planning Commission happily continues to conduct our trial with using Wordly. Wordly is a program that live translates. You can see on the screen here in chambers or the translation, and you can join and have it translated into any language as you'd like by scanning the QR code or going to the webpage that's at the bottom left of the screen. If you have any challenges, please let the clerk know. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we move on to public comments. This is a time set aside for the public to comment on a matter that is not on the agenda, and you would have three minutes to do so. And is there anybody in the chambers that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails that we have?
We have no hands up on Zoom and no additional emails.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have Agenda additions, deletions, and corrections.
For the record, we received and distributed additional correspondence and an errata memo from staff for Agenda item number three, PLN 180503, Harold Ray MJR and Linda.
Thank you. Moving on to Commissioner comments, requests, and referrals, this is the time set aside for the commissioners to comment, to request, or to refer a matter that is on or not on the agenda. So commissioners, seeing none, then we move on to scheduled matters. We go to PLN 230350, Mr. Artemis LLC. So staff?
Can we please steer staff right? Thank you. Good morning, Chair Gonzalez, planning commissioners. Jeff Svalmida presenting HCD file number PLN 230350, Mr. Artemis LLC. The project is located at 30860 Aurora Del Mar in Carmel within the Big Sur Coast Land Use Plan. The subject property is zoned rural density residential with a density of 40 acres per unit and a design control overlay in the coastal zone. The project involves an amendment to an existing conservation and scenic easement to allow the construction of a 622 square foot accessory dwelling unit and a 210 square foot trellis with 750 feet, within 750 feet of known archaeological resources. Pursuant to Title 20, the Planning Commission shall act as the recommending body to the Board of Supervisors when the Board is the appropriate authority for the combined development permit. And in this case, the Board of Supervisors is the appropriate authority to consider the proposed conservation and scenic easement amendment. Therefore, today's staff is asking the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on the proposed project. As required by the Big Sur Coast Land Use Plan and the Big Sur Coastal Implementation Plan, a conservation and scenic easement was placed over all undeveloped portions of the property as a condition of approval for the existing single-family dwelling. The purpose of the easement is to preserve the open space, scenic, and natural resource values present on the property, and so as to prevent the adverse direct and cumulative effects on coastal resources and public access from development. The proposed easement map amendment involves reconfiguring and relocating 1,100 square feet of the existing easement to allow for the construction of the proposed ADU, leaving the overall size of the easement the same at approximately 43,596 square feet. The area of the existing easement where the ADU is proposed to be developed does not contain biological, archaeological, or other sensitive resources as determined by the prepared biological, arborist, and archaeological reports. Additionally, and is not visible from Highway 1, the proposed amendment will not create any impacts to visual resources and will allow the easement's continued dual function of protecting visual and coastal resources on the property. In addition, there is no other location that would allow for the development of an ADU without impacting protected resources or requiring a separate amendment to the easement. The easement deed language would remain the same and continue to prohibit new structures within the easement boundaries, material alteration of the topography and landscape, and advertising, which will ensure preservation and conservation of the property's natural scenic beauty and natural condition in perpetuity. The 1,100 square foot area to be included in the easement boundaries does not conflict with the allowances or restrictions of the easement deed. The project went before the Big Sur Land Use Advisory Committee on March 11, 2025, who voted five to zero to support the project. The proposed colors and materials included tan stone exterior and dark powder coated aluminum windows, doors, and trellis, which match the existing single-family dwelling. The subject property and proposed development are located adjacent to Highway 1 along a private road that provides access to the Otter Cove neighborhood. Due to existing vegetation and topography, the proposed development is not visible from Highway 1 nor any other public viewing areas, and as cited and designed is consistent with the Big Sur Coast Land Use Plan. The proposed ADU meets all site development standards as identified in Title 20, Section Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors find that the project qualifies as a Class III and Class 17 categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines, Section 15303 and 15317, and approve a combined development permit consisting of a coastal administrative permit and design approval to allow construction of a 622 square foot accessory dwelling unit, a 210 square foot trellis and associated site improvements, a coastal administrative permit to allow development within 750 feet of known archaeological resources, and acceptance of an amended conservation and scenic easement for the Mr. Artemis LLC property. Following the Planning Commission's recommendation, the project will be considered by the Board of Supervisors. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you for your presentation. With that, we bring it back to the Planning Commission for any comments, questions, concerns. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. As I recall, the staff report references the Big Sur LUAC minutes were not available but would be provided once they were available. Are they available?
I will ask the clerk to clarify that if the minutes were made available as of yet.
I will double check with my team and let you know.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hartzell?
Would you go back to Slide 3? I'm just hoping you can, oh, next one. I see where the addition to the building envelope has been made under the red outline, but can you show me where the, how or where the conservation easement has been expanded to make up for that?
Yes, so I'm not sure if you can see them now. So this area is where the building envelope currently is. This is over a leach field. This area will be removed, as shown here, and will be added to the conservation and scenic easement, and the portion of it that was within the building envelope will be moved here. So currently, where the ADU you see on this, the upper map, is within the conservation and scenic easement, this will all become building envelope, and this area, which is currently building envelope, will become easement.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Just to sort of follow up on that, in the plans, there's a, it looks like a Google Earth view, and I think it shows an outline of where the ADU is proposed. And I'm just curious, in that Google Earth view, what, where the leach field that is being removed, or added, sorry, is added?
Yeah, so the leach field isn't being removed. It's the easement over, or the portion of, the portion of the building envelope that is over the leach field will now be within the scenic easement. The leach field is existing and will remain existing. It's just the, it will no longer be within the building envelope, it will now be within the easement.
Do you happen to have an image, the Google image? I just, the orientation on this is different than the plans, and so I can't figure out. Actually, maybe I can figure, I'm looking at the plans, it's page 19 of the plans. I don't know if that's, that's actually AO14. I just wasn't sure if it's the front of the property or the...
Yeah, so on the sheet that you're looking at, it's, so you see the dotted box showing where the ADU will be. The current leach field area, which will become a part of the easement, is in between number seven and six.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Mendoza?
So basically, going back to the same area here, so where the leach field is, is going to be placed into scenic easement, but there is development there. So, I mean, we have development where the leach field is.
So the leach field is allowed within the scenic easement?
Oh, it is?
Okay, it is, yes.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Deal?
Yeah, just a clarification on this particular slide. We have two sets of dotted lines at the bottom, and I understood that the ADU proposal was compliant with all the available, the required setbacks. What's that second dotted line at the bottom on these figures? I assume that the one closest to the property line is the setback line, but what's the other one?
That's the state-allowed ADU setback. So a state-allowed ADU setback is, has a allowed setback of four feet. We require a setback of ADUs to be, sorry, give me one second, of six feet. So I think it was just showing what the state allowed would be. This ADU has a setback, a side setback of eight feet.
I'm still confused.
So...
There are two identical lines there, and I can't tell.
So...
And then, of course, the driveway area there, the path area, has a whole set of other lines, similar dotted lines. I'm sorry, I'm just...
No, it's okay.
Maybe it's...
Commissioner, are you by any chance looking at the leach field lines that are just north on this image of the driveway? Or are they the setback lines on the perimeter of the property?
It appears to me that the dotted lines show setbacks, the first dotted line inside of the property line. And on the bottom, there are two identical lines, and that's confusing. And then there's a set of dotted lines around the path that leads towards the ADU site on both of these plans. And I just, I'm not clear on what all those are.
The dashed, sorry, the dashed lines, the first dashed line from entering the property is going to be the main structure setbacks. So you have a 20-foot front setback, I believe 20 actually on all sides in this case. And then there is going to be separately shown a four-foot required setback for the accessory dwelling unit on the bottom of the image. And then internally, there are also a handful of other dotted lines. Some are showing leach fields, those are the two parallel kind of horizontal or diagonal lines just in the middle of the property. And then there are some dashed lines also showing the existing limits of the path leading to the ADU.
But those dotted lines, or the dashed lines, however you wish to refer to them, that are surrounding the path leading to the ADU are simply showing the extent of the current path or what? And they look the same in terms of dashes as the setback lines that you've now explained have to do with the main unit and the ADU having separate required setbacks.
Commissioner, I believe it's just the extent of the path. That area is not proposed currently to be excluded from the scenic easement.
All right, thank you. I just...
And also through the chair to clarify, the Big Sur Land Use Advisory Committee minutes are available, and we would be happy to share those.
I believe they've just turned up if this is, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
One more question along the same line. In the, in the plans, it looks like they have designed this ADU among the trees that exist there. However, again, on the Google Earth, it looks like the ADU site is directly over trees. Are we considering tree removal or anything, or are we just considering lot line at this point or this?
Yes, there's no tree removal proposed with the project, and tree protection conditions have been applied.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, we're going, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and either the agent or property owner, this would be a time for you to come and make your presentation.
Chairman members of the commission, there we go. Joel Panzer, Maureen Ruck, planning consultants, representing Mr. Artemis LLC this morning. And I believe on Zoom, we might have, or we should have Evan McCurdy, who's the architect with Feldman Architecture that did the layout. We've reviewed the staff report. I had a chance to briefly speak with staff this morning before the hearing. I think the staff report accurately characterizes the proposal. It's a fairly low-profile building. It complies with setbacks. It exceeds the state setbacks for ADUs, notwithstanding the graphic clarity of the exhibit raised by commission. I just wanted to talk briefly, if I may, about the scenic easement. We agree with staff, and I understand the prior staff member had discussions with the California Coastal Commission, and they're okay with the modification. The overall size of that scenic easement does not change. I wonder if I might be able to get the overhead projector to work here. Bear with me for a minute while we work through technology. Not the best image, but what you can see on the bottom, there's a little stripe, that's Highway 1. This exhibit is, I want to say, from the mid-'80s, and at that point in time, there was no vegetation separating Highway 1 from the Aurora Del Mar subdivision. And then the scenic easement itself was imposed as part of an approval, I want to say, in And that easement resulted from policy 3.2.3.8 from the Big Sur Land Use LUP, and it says, "Landowners will be encouraged to grant scenic easements for the county over portions of their land in the critical view shed." As noted correctly in the staff report and the intervening 26 years since this project was approved, vegetation has matured between Highway 1 and Aurora Del Mar, the street that provides access. The staff report further notes that the property is not in the critical view shed. So I just wanted to make that clarification because the staff presentation suggested that scenic easement was placed to protect resources on the property and other things. It was solely for visibility issues. In the staff, in the application, there's a biological report, which knows or noticed, notes that there are no special status plant species on the property. There's an archaeological report that notes that there are no archaeological artifacts or resources on the site. So I just wanted to sort of make it clear from the applicant's perspective, all we're talking about is visibility, and this unit is not visible from the site. So we're okay with the scenic easement change, and I hope the commission will make that recommendation. There is one other clarification we would like to bring to your attention. I can go back to the overhead, please. The resolution itself, on the top of, draft resolution rather, on top of Page 1, Item 2C refers to an amendment of the scenic easement map. Finding one item C, towards the bottom, also talks about a deed and map amendment. In speaking with staff, I think what we're talking about is the graphic, which is an exhibit. I just don't want to have in the record confusion that when we're speaking about a map, we're referring to some sort of record of survey or some formalized map, but a map exhibit. So I would, if the commission is inclined to do that, to swap the word "map" for "exhibit" or "graphic exhibit" or something, words to that effect. And then finally, this is more anecdotal comment. When, I attended the commission hearing when you reviewed and made a recommendation on the coastal ADU ordinance, and Commissioner Deal had asked the question about, to staff, you know, what does it cost for somebody to get an ADU coastal permit? How long does it take? So from this perspective, or for this particular project, the fee just to apply was $15,023, so there's just a data point. And we initiated this application on December 14, 2023. So it takes, in this case, it took a year and a half for an application for an ADU, which is to provide housing stock, and it takes a year and a half to get that permit. Given the scenic easement amendment, that'll add at least another 60 days to that timeframe. And then if you consider the local appeal period and the coastal commission appeal periods, that'll add another three months. So 21 months is what it'll take this applicant to get a permit for an ADU. Finding one item C towards the bottom also talks about a deed and map amendment. In speaking with staff, I think what we're talking about is the graphic, which is an exhibit. I just don't want to have in the record confusion that when we're speaking about a map, we're referring to some sort of record of survey or some formalized map, but a map exhibit. So I would, if the commission is inclined to do that, to swap the, the word map for exhibit or graphic exhibit or something, words to that effect. And then finally, this is more anecdotal comment. When, I attended the commission hearing when you reviewed and made a recommendation on the coastal ADU ordinance, and Commissioner Deal had asked the question about, to staff, you know, what does it cost for somebody to get an ADU coastal permit? How long does it take? So from this perspective, or for this particular project, the fee just to apply was $15,023. So there's just a data point. And we initiated this application on December 14th, 2023. So it takes, in, in this case, it took a year and a half for an application for an ADU, which is to provide housing stock, and it takes a year and a half to get that permit. Given the scenic easement amendment, that'll add at least another 60 days to that timeframe. And then if you consider the local appeal period and the coastal commission appeal periods, that'll add another three months. So 21 months is what it'll take this applicant to get a permit for an ADU. So for what it's worth, I thought I'd share that information. With that, we ask the commission to support the staff recommendation to the board of supervisors for approval, both for the ADU and both the scenic easement amendment. And I'm happy to answer any questions, should there be any. Thank you for your time.
Are there any questions from the commissioner for Mr. Panzer? Seeing none, then I'll continue with the public hearing. Is there anybody here in the chambers that would like to address this particular project? Seeing none, then is there anybody on Zoom or any emails that were wanting to address or address this particular item?
There are no hands up in Zoom and no additional emails.
Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to the staff. Is there any comments, clarifications, changes that you would like to?
Not at this time.
Recommend? So then therefore, we bring it back to the commission for any comments, concerns, questions, clarifications. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Couple of things just to go over. Looking at the LUAC minutes, one of their concerns is that a structure will be permitted and that the tree barrier may be removed because of a fire prevention plan. And I note that the easement deed referenced by staff in the report says it prohibits all structures and advertising and requires that landscaping, vegetation, and topography to maintain, remain in their present condition. How does that interact with fire clearance? Because this is an ongoing concern in scenic areas where we have concerns about visibility.
So the, it would be allowed to be removed within the scenic easement if for fire purposes it was necessary?
Regardless of whether that affected visibility?
Yes.
Can we make a note just to double check that? I'm interested in that in a larger sense. Okay, so I also am interested in the specific LUP language around this area because Otter Cove is an area of exception to the visual policies in the land use plan. I didn't, perhaps I didn't read well enough, but I just want clarification around how the critical view shed is modified in this particular area and to what extent.
The Big Sur Coastal Land Use Plan establishes the general prohibition on development being visible within the critical view shed, which is generally everything visible from Highway One and other public common viewing areas. However, there are certain areas within the Big Sur Land Use Plan area that are exempt or excluded or may have reduced limitations within the critical view shed. Otter Cove, the subject subdivision, is one of those. While they are still subject to the policies of the critical view shed, there is a lesser restriction where visibility could be established, provided it's minimum, and not overall obtrusive to the general public view shed.
So to follow up on that, do we have findings indicating that this particular development complies with the exception language in the Big Sur Land Use Plan with respect to the critical view shed? A specific language, not general language?
There is just general language. Staff is happy to add the specifics to the exception for the subject subdivision.
I want to make sure that we are continuing to follow the exact standards that are put out for this area and not some more, more general idea that they either are totally exempt or they're not exempt, or it's the critical view shed except where it isn't. So I'd like to have some specificity in those findings. And then I just want to address the, the applicant's representative contended that it was an easement only with respect to scenic. And I, I didn't follow whether that was related to his proposed change from the word map to something else. But I want staff to confirm that the easement language, as referenced in the staff report, is for a conservation and scenic easement that protects open space as well as specific biological, archaeological, or scenic values, right? I mean, open space is a, is a value separate from any of those other things, right? And it is included in this easement, right?
Yes, that's correct. The, the conservation scenic easement specifically states that the grantor and grantee desire to preserve and conserve for the public benefit the great natural scenic beauty and existing openness, natural conditions, and present state of use of the property. Those would include biological, archaeological, and other sensitive resources that may occur on the property, as well as just general openness.
Yes, it's the, it's the not limiting to the listed values that I want to make sure that whatever changes we might consider would not affect. And then I want to go back to the applicant's request for change language and ask staff their view on that subject.
If anything, staff would recommend maybe clarifying that it is modifying Exhibit C of the original easement. However, it is common practice to refer to it as the map attached to the easement deed.
So would staff be willing to add to the map attached as shown in Exhibit C some language to that?
That is correct.
Okay. Those are all my questions, and after that, I would be prepared to make a motion after there's further discussion.
Okay. Any, let me see, any other commissioners? If not, then Commissioner Deal?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and, and move that we recommend to the board of supervisors the project as we have discussed here today, including the additional language for both map and the specificity around the critical view shed exception.
Okay, I have a motion, but Commissioner Deal? Second by Commissioner Hartzel. Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion so indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Any notes, abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Still haven't gotten it.
May I ask a follow-up question or maybe just a question of staff?
Yes, ma'am.
As I said during the discussion, I remained interested in the statement that the visual protections can be modified by fire protection requirements. And so I'd like staff to continue to keep us updated on that subject because that's a little concerning to me.
Thank you. With that, we move on to the next item on the agenda. That is PLN 210331 Reynolds, Jean-Cu, and TR at L. So with that, staff, can you go ahead and make your presentation on that?
Good morning, Chair Gonzalez, planning commissioners. Jeff Svalmida presenting for HCD file number PLN 210331 Reynolds. The project is located at 26489 Scenic Road and 26454 Carmelo Street in Carmel within the Carmel Area Land Use Plan. The subject property is a zone medium density residential with a density of two units per acre, a design control overlay, and an 18-foot height limit in the coastal zone. The project involves the construction of a 1,056-square-foot detached accessory dwelling unit and associated site improvements within 750 feet of known archaeological resources and within 100 feet of environmentally sensitive habitat. Additionally, the project involves a lotline adjustment to merge three legal lots of record into one 0.85-acre lot. As proposed, the project is an allowed use for the zoning district and meets all applicable site development standards. The project involves a lotline adjustment to merge three legal lots of record, shown on screen outlined in red, green, and orange, into one legal lot consisting of 0.85 acres or 36,914 square feet, shown on screen outlined in blue. The lotline adjustment is between four or fewer existing lots and will not result in any new lots. The proposed lotline adjustment is consistent with the County of Monterey zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. As proposed, the project involves an application for development within 100 feet of environmentally sensitive habitat areas. A biological assessment was prepared for the proposed project and found that the site contained degraded dune scrub habitat, which was designated for restoration as part of an addition to an existing single-family dwelling in 2003. The biological assessment found that this previous restoration area has been degraded by the presence and introduction of non-native invasive ice plant and non-native landscape planting. Thus, the biologist recommends that this area be re-vegetated to enhance and restore the dune scrub habitat. Although the footprint of the ADU is not within the dune scrub habitat, construction of the proposed ADU may inadvertently remove native-sensitive dune scrub habitat vegetation. This potential impact on ESHA has been reduced to a less than significant level with the incorporation of mitigation measure bio 1. Mitigation measure bio 1 requires a qualified biologist to prepare a coastal dune scrub revegetation plan that restores the southern corner of the property and other native vegetation areas that are disturbed by the implementation of the proposed project and eradicates invasive species. Condition number five requires the introduction of native species into the landscaping. Implementation of mitigation measure bio 1 and condition number five is consistent with the ESHA and native landscaping requirements of the Carmel Area Land Use Plan. The project site is within an area of high archaeological sensitivity and is within 750 feet of numerous known archaeological resources, specifically C.A.M.N.T. 17. A Phase II archaeological report was prepared in 2022, which reviewed the conclusions of two archaeological reports prepared by Basin Research Associates in 2003 and 2010, conducted additional auger testing, and reviewed available literature. Though no cultural resources were identified within the proposed development footprint, Basin Research Associates concluded that cultural deposit is present within the project site and immediately adjacent areas at an approximate depth, depth of six to seven feet below the current surface. Accordingly, the project archaeologists recommended that the project's ground disturbance not exceed 24 to 30 inches below existing surface contours. The ADU incorporates a map foundation design, which avoids the need for piers or footings and requires minimal excavation. The proposed foundation and overall project sighting minimizes and/or avoids known and unknown archaeological resources as required by the Carmel Area Coastal Implementation Plan. Mitigation measure CUL 1 requires a qualified archaeological review of the final construction plans to confirm that excavation will not exceed 24 to 30 inches. Implementation of mitigation measure CUL 1 in compliance with condition number three will ensure impacts on archaeological resources remain less than significant. Additionally, mitigation measure number TR 1 requires a tribal monitor to be on-site during ground disturbance to ensure that tribal cultural artifacts or human remains are treated with the appropriate dignity and respect if discovered. Therefore, as proposed, conditions and mitigated, the potential for inadvertent impacts on cultural and tribal resources is limited, and the project will avoid or substantially minimize impacts on archaeological resources. The county prepared a draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration. County staff filed the draft ISM and D with the county clerk on April 9th, 2025, and circulated for public review from April 9th through May 9th of 2025. The draft ISM and D identified potentially significant impacts to biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources. Mitigation measures have been proposed to reduce the identified impacts to a level of less than significant and are identified as bio 1, TR 1, and CUL 1, and have been incorporated as conditions numbers 18, 19, and 20. All other standard topics of environmental analysis were found to have less than significant impacts or no impacts. During the public review period of the initial study, two members of the public submitted comments. A neighbor requested that the ADU be relocated towards the main residence to reduce its visibility from their private residence. However, county regulations do not protect private views. Additionally, the Open Monterey Project contended the accuracy of the ISM and D by claiming that it failed to disclose that a tribal cultural resource was found near the proposed development site in 2010 and did not analyze the removal of natural boulders and rock outcroppings. The information provided by the Open Monterey Project does not provide significant new information that would increase the severity of the identified potential impact on tribal cultural resources. Locations of artifacts are generally confidential to minimize the potential of looting, vandalism, or damage. Therefore, the initial study did not disclose specific locations, but did disclose the high archaeological sensitivity of the area. Additionally, no boulder or rock outcroppings removal is proposed, and therefore no impact will occur to these resources. Mitigation measure TR 1's requirement that tribal monitoring occurred during initial project-related grading and excavation has been clarified to include ground disturbance associated, associated with the foundation, utilities, entry removal, not the moving of soils previously excavated for the project. The project was referred to the Carmel Highlands LUAC on April 17th, 2023. LUAC members voted six to zero in support of the project. The proposed ADU's colors and materials consist of local Carmel stone, wood siding, wood shake roofing, driftwood trellising, and energy-efficient windows and doors, which are consistent with the main residence and surrounding neighborhood. Key policy 2.2.2 of the Carmel Area Land Use Plan requires that development be subordinate to the natural scenic character of the area and must conform to the basic view shed policy of minimum visibility. The proposed development will not be visible from Highway One or Point Lobos. The project site is, however, located along Scenic Road, a designated public viewing area. Due to changes in topography and the existing structures on the property, the proposed development will have minimum visibility. Only the upper portion of the ADU will be visible from portions of Scenic Road and Carmel River Beach. The visible portions of the development would be distant and unobtrusive due to the sighting and the existence of Monterey cypress trees. Therefore, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration pursuant to CECL guidelines, section 15074. Approve a combined development permit consisting of a coastal administrative permit and design approval to allow construction of a 1,056-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. A coastal development permit for a lotline adjustment to merge three legal lots of, three legal lots of record into one 36,914-square-foot lot. A coastal development permit for development within 750 feet of archaeological resources. A coastal development permit for development within 100 feet of environmentally sensitive habitat area, and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you for your presentation. With that, we bring it back to the commission. Any commissioners with questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Hartzel?
Could you go back to slide seven? Just want to confirm, the staking and flagging shown here isn't still up, is that correct? Or is it?
I do not believe the staking and flagging is still up. I'd have to confirm that with the applicant. It's not.
Just noting that I went to go check out this project. I approached from Scenic Road. I jumped, I stood on my toes, I had a hard time seeing the project area. My second question, and I didn't see any staking and flagging, which is not up. Boulders, I heard you say that there's no planned movement of boulders, but if there was, it would have to be disclosed and involved in the conditions and permit? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
It would have been analyzed under the archaeological report as well as the ISM and D.
Great. And then last one, just want to state for the record, no further outreach from OSAN or Esslyn Tribe of Monterey County?
Staff has not received any, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. On that note about OSAN, are they aware, so I noticed that they made the recommendation that they wanted to have one tribal monitor per soil disturbing machine, but I noticed that in the conditions, it only is asking for one tribal monitor. So I'm wondering if they're aware that that was not incorporated, that recommendation?
The, that is typically a request of the local tribes that we do consult with, and is often discussed during the consultation, that it is typically not applied through county staff recommendations. And so that it would have been disclosed to the tribe at the time, however, they would have provided formal comment that that was still the request. It's, it's uncommon to have a monitor per excavating machine.
Through the, sorry.
Sorry, I was just, it could be applied if the, the commission found that was suitable.
Through the chair, I, I understand that that's not common. I would lean more towards accepting the recommendation just because of the significance of this area and things that have happened in the past. I've, I've spoken with some of the tribal monitors and some of the stories that they relayed to me about findings of significance that have been mishandled by people on site. I think if there's going to be multiple excavation things going on, I would love to see that recommendation incorporated if the rest of the commission agreed with that.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. All right. So I note that the letter from the, when a member of the public talked about the screening between the lots, and the landscape plan doesn't recognize any consideration of that. While we're not in the business of protecting private views, it, it wouldn't be inappropriate to say that, that some screening might be an appropriate goal of a landscape. to say that some screening might be an appropriate goal of a landscape plan. So I think that I would suggest that we think about language that would say, "The landscape plan shall include some appropriate native plants to soften or screen that interaction." Because that's one of the objections that came forward in public comment, and I don't think it's entirely unreasonable, given what we have here. And my larger question is, this area had a restoration in 2003 to mitigate an addition to the property, which my knowledge is still there. That restoration is currently degraded. So did we have, is there any reason why that's not a violation? I mean, don't we have to maintain these kinds of areas as part of the requirements to mitigate for development? Because if you can just do a restoration and then forget it, and it goes away, and then you get to do it again for the next thing, that seems like a bad plan. What's the deal with that?
It would depend on the either condition of approval or mitigation measure that was applied to the addition to the single-family dwelling. We'd have to look at the specifics to see if it was required in perpetuity. I would say that is common, but we would need to look in the specifics for this situation.
But we haven't done that, so we don't know.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So I remain confused. You can't, I don't see that it's fair to give mitigation credit for repeating a previous mitigation. That doesn't seem right to me. Maybe it's just my confusion. So at the very least, I'd like to make sure that any restoration that we require for anything in this case be in perpetuity, so that we're clear about that, and I didn't see that in the condition. And this, and I'm sorry, there's a member of the public here, Mr. Chair. I don't know what that's about. We're not there yet.
I wanted to comment on that. I'm the architect.
Yeah, but this is not the time. Thank you.
Sorry. So the very least, I would like that, and really, I would like to know whether the property is in compliance with all of its previous development requirements before we decide what to do with this one. So that's my, those are my questions at this point, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
Through the chair, if I may. I do want to clarify that the proposed project didn't identify potential or direct impacts to scrub habitat on the property. There would potentially be inadvertent ones from construction workers walking around the property. However, that was not identified as a direct impact. The recommendation was from the biologist to restore a previously restoration area. So I wouldn't consider this to be crediting mitigation from a prior project, but understood the request for perpetuity and ensuring enhanced habitat.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I guess what I'm saying is, the finding is that the property is in full compliance and doesn't have any violations in existence on it. Yes, I think it would be appropriate. I think the outcome might well be the same, but should there be, should there be a violation, I would like it recognized, and that this particular application would then correct it through that condition, rather than saying, "Yeah, the biologist thinks it'd be nice if we put back the restoration we expected to be there from before." So it's a distinction, but I think there really is a difference between those two things. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, then, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and this will be the time for either the agent or the property owner to come and make their presentation. So is there owner or agent?
Hi, I'm Terry Flynn, the architect, and we agree with the entire presentation. I just wanted to make a comment about the ice plant that's on the site. If you look at the exhibit that's being shown, the house in the lower left-hand corner is the neighbor property, and their entire yard is ice plant, as is, which is adjacent to John Reynolds' property, the property in question. Also, across the street on the state beach is full of ice plant along the road. So that's why that area, that little corner of the property adjacent to the neighbor who has a full ice plant yard, and, you know, close to the, and ice plant all on the other side of Scenic Drive, it's intruded some. And John has just sort of let it intrude for a while, knowing he's going to do a full remod, you know, re-landscaping of the yard with, in conjunction with the ADU project. But it's just tough to keep it out. That area was all native grasses, and the ice plant just, it intrudes.
Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any questions? Can you come back up? I believe Commissioner Shaw has a question.
Thank you. So this maybe is just, this is an assumption, that these kind of homes in Carmel usually have gardeners maintaining, it's not usually the homeowner out there pulling weeds. Right. So knowing that this was something that needed to be done in 2003, which is quite a while ago, I guess I fail to understand why this wasn't maintained. I completely understand, as someone who does my own landscaping, how hard it is to get these kind of invasive plants out, but that's as someone who is a stay-at-home mom and has other things on my plate. So I guess I just am wondering, why wasn't this maintained? And knowing that it needed to be done, and was this ADU in 2003, '04, '05, '06, '07, any of the, you know, past 20-something years, that was the plan for that long, and we'll all just take care of it when that comes around?
No. I mean, it was maintained, but in the last couple of years, it's come in. Actually, obviously, it came in before 2022, when this was, the new biologic report came, when she walked the site. She said, "You've got some ice plant coming in again in this corner." But the entire site in 2000, whenever the first time, they have kept it out of this entire site, and it's a very large site, except for that corner. So it's not like there wasn't any effort, and there is gardeners.
Thank you. I guess I appreciate that clarification, that it's a small portion of the site, because the staff report, I guess, again, I'm assuming that it's more than, so you're saying it's just basically this corner that we're seeing bordering the neighbors' properties? Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm John Reynolds. I'm the owner of the property. Initially, the architectural firm of Bernard Trainer did the entire site. He's pretty preeminent in his field, and most of the site has responded well. The frontage is an extremely harsh environment, high winds, blowing sand. It would appear that the only thing that is healthy on this corner is ice plant. When we bought the property, it was fully, completely covered with ice plant. We removed it all. So in 2003, we have a show garden. The environment trashed it. We redid it again. We plan to redo it a third time with the ADU. So the maintenance, if you look at the whole site, the maintenance on the Carmelo Street side is abundant and thriving. The scenic spot is extremely harsh, and Bernard says, "Hey, I give up. So we'll do it again." And that's where we are. So it's not a question of not attending to it. It's just the environment doesn't, it isn't healthy. It was fully formed with poppies. We love the poppies. They are, they strain to be healthy. So we'll do it again.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? If not, thank you. Thank you. Now you can, you can, there are no more, there are no more questions. Thank you. And with that, is there anybody in the chambers that would like to address this particular item? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails related to this particular item?
There is a hand up on Zoom. It looks like we have Steve's iPad.
Yes, yes, thank you. I'm curious, was there a requirement to do a three-by-three test dig to assure that there were no archaeologically sensitive materials that are present, that would be present, as opposed to just doing a magger? I think the three-by-three test dig is more comprehensive and will potentially find more
Thank you. Any more, any more comments or questions?
We do have one more person, John Perkins. You should be able to unmute. John, you are--
Hello.
Oh, perfect. We can hear you.
Okay. My name is John Perkins. We owned the property immediately behind the subject project on Carmelo, and I've been talking lately, and basically a couple of years ago, with Terry Flynn. And yesterday, I had a conversation with the applicant, John Reynolds, and the discussions were about a row of what your report says are non-native cypress trees immediately above the dwelling, above the retaining wall that is shown on the dwelling plans. There's only a 10-foot setback included, and Mr. Reynolds and I had a good conversation. And my understanding is that the site plan is going to change somewhat to provide more space behind the dwelling and behind his new retaining wall, number one, and keeping, not removing, but keeping that row of trees. I don't know how old the trees are, but the roots of these trees have provided some substantial protection from blowing sands. The area between our property and the Reynolds' property is the very top of a sand dune, and the winds can, I believe, get quite strong. Ms. Flynn has a photograph, I don't know if she brought it with her, taken of our side of the property when we're recently putting in, it's like an eight-foot retaining wall to protect some of the sand. And so I just wanted to make the planning commission knowledgeable about that. There are mentions in the staff report about a plan to remove those trees, but we don't think that's a good idea. I don't know how long it would take to create a row of native cypress trees, but that's not going to help us, and I don't think it's going to help Mr. Reynolds either, and I, Mr. Reynolds, I think, understands that. So to the extent that the staff report talks about removing those trees, I don't think that's accurate, and I think Mr. Reynolds would agree with that. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom or any emails related to this item?
There are no other hands up on Zoom and no additional emails.
Thank you. At this point, I'll bring it back to either the property owner or the agent, if they'd like to respond to any of the comments made during public comment or the hearing. Go ahead.
Mr. Perkins and I have had continuing discussions over this issue. So we further set the building pack past the 10 feet, and we asked that they be removed and replaced with new, but I believe most of them can be saved, and we're in continuing discussions with the grading contractor to save the trees in front of Mr. Perkins' backyard. I would comment that it is his backyard and that there's no, well, it's very deep and low, and there's a fence that we put in that protects him, and that will stay. And I gave him my assurance that I would take every possible way to save the trees, and that was my commitment to him. I think he misunderstood when we said we'd move the plan further. We already moved it once, and we would ask that the present plan be approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Can I just get clarification? Are you saying that we're talking not about the native trees, but about the hedge? Is it your intention to maintain that or your intention to remove that?
My intention is to save as many of we can. It becomes a condition with the grading. We were sensitive to these Indians and artifacts. We have proposed a mat foundation with no augers, and it's an eight-inch slab with double rebar that has no foundation drilling, so our excavation will be an absolute minimum. It's quite a change, but it works. So we chose not to disturb the native. We're not going six or seven feet. We think we can get by 24 inches. We moved the site to the south. We initially had it so that the other neighbor had a peak abuse site, but we moved it south to create a more level environment so that we didn't have to excavate quite as much. So it's sort of a balancing act between sensitivity of the, but we're not excavating at all, very much.
Mr. Chair, to clarify?
Yes.
I'm really only asking about the hedge of non-native cypress trees--
Correct.
--and, period. And so we have, the proposed resolution allows removal of that.
Yes.
And my question is, is your intent to remove those or not? And I still don't understand at the end of your question.
My intent is to save as many of them as I can in deference to Mr. Perkins.
Okay, and so that helps a great deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? I think we have one more question. Oh, not of him? Okay, thank you. I thought of it. And with that, then, we bring it back to staff for any clarifications, comments.
Yes. Staff looked into the 2003 requirement for restoration. In 2008, a biologist went out and documented that the work was implemented and was done, and recommended that it be continued in perpetuity. And then, with the most recent biological report, that was not done. So staff can update the language in the resolution to reflect that the recommendations of the 2008 biologist were not followed, and that this plan restores that recommendation as well as any potential impacts that this project might have.
Additionally, the landscape plans, or a condition of approval has been applied to require that landscape plans be submitted to-- has been applied to require that landscape plans be submitted to county staff prior to issuance of construction permits. That landscape plan would ensure whether, or would illustrate whether or not that hedge of trees is being retained. It would also identify the 24-inch box trees, box cypress trees that are currently proposed for screening effect between the two properties and does require in perpetuity that the property be maintained in a native state weed-free, litter-free.
Okay, thank you. With that, we bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Deal? Oh, yeah.
I was waiting to see what Commissioner Roberts had to say.
Commissioner Roberts.
I just have a question and it's kind of a more macro-level question. And I'm, I'm forgetting what the difference between an ADU and a single-family dwelling is. I appreciate that this applicant is choosing to combine the three lots because in theory they have the opportunity to build three single-family dwellings. However, the LUAC questioned, you know, could this be later subdivided? And the answer is yes, with permits and all that. And so I guess I'm curious to understand what the difference between this ADU is or if it had been built as a single-family dwelling and...
The biggest difference is that accessory dwelling units are limited to 1,200 square feet. They do include separate independent living facilities. So if the property were to be subdivided with, you know, appropriate approvals and environmental review, that accessory dwelling unit could be reclassified as a single-family dwelling as it all has independent living facilities. But as a merged lot, it would not count towards the overall density and would be an accessory dwelling unit.
And then just to follow up, I guess my only other question is, is there, again, I don't think the property owner has any intent of this, but I'm thinking of a future property owner. Is there an advantage to doing it this way, like permitting-wise? Is it easier? I just, or is it all the same, one way or another?
It would be the same type of permit would be required and...
Sorry, this is time for the commission and the staff only. So unless we, you can go ahead and sit down. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No worries. Under current regulations, the process would be the same. Still requires a coastal administrative permit and design approval, whether it was a single-family dwelling or accessory dwelling unit. The, the biggest difference is a subdivision would be required if they wanted to split the lots.
After this, if this were to be approved?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I really appreciate working through the, making sure we write down what the applicant has, has told us what his intentions are with respect to that, the hedge. Make sure that that's in there. And then I want to make a comment about restoration versus landscaping. They're not the same. And so this area is a sand dune. It's not designed by nature to have stuff growing all over it. Ice plant takes advantage of that because ice plant coming from elsewhere is able to, to survive. But sand dunes are really not very comfortable for living on. I mean, the whole sand dune experience, in my view, involves stinging ankles and sand in your, in your lunch, you know? And the number of plants that are, that are comfortable growing in that kind of a harsh environment, as the applicant has pointed out, are few and far between. So in general, my, my comment here, and it is just a comment, is that restoration to the, and that whole area has been, had a history of trying to do restoration. State parks been trying, other landowners have been trying. So far, not extraordinarily successfully. But the picture that many of us carry about what landscaping of an area like that should be like involves a lot of vegetation. The actual area would not have that. So when we're talking about restoration and we're talking about landscaping, there's a distinction that I want us to carry forward and say, if we're really looking to try to keep as much of the natural character of an area as we can, it may not be compatible with our landscaping vision for how we would like our, our structures to look. And that tension is real and we need to be really cognizant of it so that we don't blur that line and say that restoration includes planning a bunch of things that would not normally make it there because then they won't. And so I'm sorry about the discursion, but it, and it seems really trivial, but it kind of isn't. I'm also really appreciative of all the efforts to avoid disturbing the, the archaeological potential of this site. I know we have good evidence on the record that this specific site does not appear to be in the part of that larger area that is particularly, particularly covered with cultural remains. But the entire section is really a village. I mean, it's, it's part of a larger setting of one of the oldest settlements that's been ever happened in our area. So we do want to keep that high level of scrutiny on it. And the fact that we are reducing the excavation to the absolute minimum is, in my mind, very much appropriate and appreciated in this case. And I hope that with the addition of the additional tribal monitors, and I guess with respect to the, the point made by Commissioner Shaw, I'd like that condition to include that we could ask for additional monitors for additional work. I mean, like if there's additional equipment on the recommendation of the monitor who is there. If that person feels like they are unable to cover all the bases, then they could make the statement that we need an additional monitor. I'm not sure how to word that, but that, with the concurrence of my colleague, I'd like to address that and the tribe's recommendation. So we don't have to impose the additional cost, but we may leave that open should it be available. And if those changes make sense and we have a way to incorporate them, I'd be happy to move this application forward when others have said their piece.
The change in the depth of the foundation in deference to the village site is something I really appreciate. I noticed it was, I believe, 24 inches and that the public comment had asked for a three-by-three test, but that the, the foundation isn't even going quite that deep. Just noting that for the record because I'm incredibly sensitive to this area and the archaeological resources and wanted to comment that I feel like requiring more tests versus changing the entire plan for the ADU, it's a delicate balance. I also agree with Chair Deal, not Chair Deal, with Commissioner Deal that allowing for asking for an additional monitor is a good way to kind of split the difference there, especially because they have already made this, the changes to the site to mitigate and adjust to the history of the environment. So noting that there.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes, thank you. I could support, okay. So before I vote on this, I need to understand completely in my own mind what we're asking the tribal monitor to do and how many there are. And I'm getting confused. I could support an additional tribal monitor if necessary, but I cannot support something where the, the person on the ground can say, well, I need two or three more at his discretion to do that. I mean, and then it would be done on, at his discretion. I just, I can't support that. So can you, can you tell me what the actual, your understanding staff is what the actual condition now would say? I would like to complete in my mind. Thank you.
Through the chair, are you requesting staff's draft language to incorporate Commissioner Deal's comments?
Well, no, I'm not requesting Commissioner Deal. Already requested that, I believe. I'm just requesting a definition for what I'm actually voting on right now. So whatever that language would be, I'm not suggesting you, I mean, I'm not suggesting anything to you. Just I'm trying to understand what I'm voting on. What that language would be that I'm voting for.
I guess if we can request clarity from Commissioner Deal. I believe I understood, but go ahead. Commissioner Deal?
I think Commissioner Getzelman's point is good and would suggest that the language we use say that the existing required tribal monitor may request one additional person should it get out of hand, you know? If they feel that they can't keep track. It seems perfectly reasonable to me. And I don't know if it was what I said, but it could be what I said now.
And then I would agree completely.
Thank you. And now we go to Commissioner Gomez.
I have the same question.
Okay, thank you.
It's been addressed. Thank you.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yeah, it basically goes right back to, to having the monitor out there. Obviously, whenever there's any excavation, if you have one tribal monitor, he will be there seeing excavation part of it. So, I mean, we're, we're talking about a 1,200-square-foot home. So there isn't that much digging for, say, we're going 24 inches. It's just, sometimes if you give too much options, it could become a problem. So we have to have a limit on it, like is it one additional, two additional, three additional? As long as there's a limit and it doesn't get out of hand, just for future projects. I mean, I think we're, it can really, really, really get out of hand. It could be as simple as maybe having a, a GoPro recording the sidewalk while they're doing the excavating or what have you just to make sure that, you know, nothing is, is being missed and there's evidence of what's being done, I think would be a better way to go with it. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Deal?
I would respond, yes, it's always good to be clear about what you're asking for. And I appreciate the help of my colleagues in making that clear. And in this case, we have had projects in this immediate vicinity that have discovered human remains. And we have had projects in this immediate vicinity who have discovered significant cultural effects. And we have had in this vicinity some histories where these things have not been properly treated. So just keeping in mind that we have an extraordinarily sensitive area, even though we've done everything we can in this particular site to make sure it's not going to make things worse. But all recommendations are not general. And then whatever we need to say is, I, I want this to be clear that this is about this place, which is a particular place. And, and that's why we don't let people build underground garages in this place. You know, it's a, it's really a different treatment than we might want to take generally across the board. So I hope the condition can be clear that it's related to the specific circumstances of this application.
Through the chair, yes. Staff can make that clarification addition. Staff would also like to inform the commission that condition number three does require an on-call archaeological monitor. Is there a desire from the commission that the tribal cultural monitor mitigation measure be modified to call upon that on-call archaeologist to be on-site to monitor if additional monitoring services are needed? Or is it specific that an additional tribal cultural monitor be on-site?
I don't know. What did the tribes say? That's whatever they mean. And we go by the recommendation of the tribes where we can, I believe. So I would say tribal cultural and hope that the issue never arises is what I'm hoping for. Anyway, with, if that's sufficiently clear, I'd go ahead and, and move staff's recommendation as amended in this hearing.
Okay, Commissioner Deal has, has made the motion. Do we have? Okay, seconded by Commissioner Gomez. Any further comments, questions, clarifications from the commission? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Saying none, then motion carries. With that, we need, we'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break. And we'll be back in 10 minutes at about 10:28, 10:30-ish. And we'll be back in 10 minutes at about 10:28, 10:30-ish. So we can wrap up our conversations. With that, we'll go ahead and start again, the meeting again at approximately 10:30. All of the commissioners that were present at the beginning are present now. And so with that, we will continue to, item number three on the agenda, and that's PLN 180503, Herod Ray, Am Junior, and Linda Herod Gregory Mark. So with that, if the staff can go ahead and start their presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Gonzalez and Commissioners. My name is Haya Honorato, and I will be presenting staff's report on PLN 180503 for Herod. The property is located at 103A Laguna Place in Salinas, within the Toro area plan. The property is zoned as low-density residential with a maximum gross density of one acre per unit with visual sensitivity zoning district overlay. The project consists of construction of a single-family residence with an attached garage and a detached 1,500-square-foot garage, development on slopes in excess of 25%, and the removal of 49 Coast live oak trees. The current site plan reflects the location of the main residence, the proposed driveway, and leach field location for the subtext system. The project is within the VS overlay, which is intended to regulate development impacts when viewed from a common viewing area. Staff conducted a site visit on May 12th on 2025 and confirmed that the staking and flagging is not visible from Laurelis grade, Highway 68, or other common public viewing areas. This is a view looking towards Highway 68 here. In accordance with Title 21, Section 21.46.030D2, an administrative permit is required for the construction of the main structures. The parcel is heavily wooded and steeply sloped. The proposed development is located on the flattest portion of the property and is not visible due to the natural topography and the heavy vegetation in the area. This is the north and south elevations of the main house, as shown here. And east and west elevations. The proposed exterior colors and materials are consistent with the Toro area plan for having an earth-tone appearance. Colors include an earth-green exterior stucco walls with stone veneer accents and off-white exterior trim, Class A composition shingle roofing, and white frame windows. The proposed house will have a comparatively similar bulk and mass to other residences within the area. The proposed project includes 12,510 square feet of development on slopes in excess of 25%. There is a violation on the property that occurred while the applicant cleared and graded a portion of the existing road on the property to allow access to the future building location for architects and consultants. The picture shown is the existing road that will also be used as the future driveway approach. The applicant was cited as needing an after-the-fact use permit to allow such grading. The applicant has paid twice the application fee and is seeking the after-the-fact use permit as restoration is not feasible option due to the topography of the property. Pursuant to General Plan Policy OS 3.5, development on slopes that exceed 25% is prohibited unless a use permit is obtained and the appropriate authority finds that there is no feasible alternative that would allow development to occur on slopes less than 25% or the proposed development better achieves the goals, policies, and objectives of the Monterey County General Plan and Applicable Land Use Plan. Due to the steep topography of the parcel, development on slopes cannot be avoided. The driveway uses much of the existing road that already leads to the proposed building site and minimizes impacts to the hillside. Modifications to the driveway were designed to meet requirements to allow for emergency vehicles, as well as to minimize impacts to larger trees and landmark trees. The proposed location for the residence is on the flattest portion of the property at the top of the parcel, as seen on the site map. And the shifting of this development would not eliminate development on slopes due to the irregular and sporadic sloping of this parcel. There is no feasible alternative for the proposed development that would reduce impacts to trees without increasing development on slopes. There are a total of 49 Coast live oak trees proposed for removal. Pursuant to Title 21, Section 2164 to 60, a use permit is required for the removal of protected trees that are six inches or greater in diameter measured at breast height. The parcel is heavily forested, and tree removal is required for the driveway and proposed development. Resiting the main dwelling or garage would not reduce impacts to tree and would most likely increase the number of trees and would increase the development on slopes in excess of 25%. Most of the trees on the property are of moderate size of less than 10 inches in diameter, many of which are within or near the building and driveway areas. No landmark-sized oaks have been identified for removal or impacted by development. Although some grading was done prior to an entitlement, no trees were previously removed. And the proposed driveway improvements and design strategically took into consideration the minimum number of trees required for removal under circumstances. And it does not involve a risk of adverse environmental impacts. The project does include a condition for pre-construction meeting to occur, and efforts to further minimize impacts of trees prior to construction will be applied, and larger trees will be prioritized over smaller trees, as shown here in the picture, and smaller trees being within the red circle. The Arborist has recommended that replanting shall be a five-gallon stock on a one-to-one ratio in accordance with Monterey County zoning ordinance, Section 21.64.260D4. However, larger stocks, such as 15-gallon size, on a one-to-two ratio with Coast live oak trees, is preferred by the Arborists due to the mixed maturity of the trees and increasing the long-term maintenance of the forest. Staff would like to note that the condition number 10 was erroneously omitted, the tree assessment, and will update the condition prior to issuance of the resolution. The project was brought before the Toro Advisory Committee on May 12, 2025. Concerns were brought up during the meeting regarding the presence of arsenic within the water supply. It was acknowledged that the applicant and Environmental Health Bureau were aware of this concern. The Environmental Health Bureau included a non-standard condition for arsenic testing, and an errata memo was provided to update the language of the condition to include state-required testing as well. The Luac members voted unanimously to recommend approval as opposed with one abstention. The county did receive two letters of public comment in regards to the project. And for, to address the concerns in regards to the private road, the county does not protect private views or issues within the private road. So that would be something to, for the applicant to work with the neighbors. The other piece of the letters was in regards to the erosion control or erosion questions. There is an erosion control plan that has been applied to the project. The plan does include that the applicant shall not create any hazards and must maintain erosion measures throughout the project and afterwards. So any concerns that might come up during the project will be addressed during, with the erosion control plan. The project meets the criteria of a Class III categorical exemption of the SECA guidelines as the construction of a single-family residence on an undeveloped, residentially-zoned property. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission find that the project qualifies for a Class III categorical exemption and approve a combined development permit for the construction of a single-family dwelling, barn, and, sorry, detached garage and associated site improvements, the removal of up to 49 Coast live oak trees, development on slopes in excess of 25%, and partially clear violation number 18CE70. This concludes staff's presentation. The staff is available for questions.
Thank you for the report, the presentation. Commissioners, any comments, questions, concerns? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Excellent report. Thank you. Question. Will the existing recorded easement for the driveway accommodate the driveway as it's proposed here, including the fire requirements? So it's all on the existing easement?
The turnout for the driveway is actually on the property itself because it is longer than 150 feet. And the current driveway on the easement itself is roughly about 11 feet. The easement is 30 feet. So if the residents decide to make any improvements to the road, they will have the opportunity to do so.
So the road proposed is, I think, an 11, 12-foot road, and it would fit within the easement across other people's property that they are, these landowners already have?
The existing road is 11 feet. The proposed driveway will be 12 feet.
Right.
Yeah.
But in other words, we talk about not regulating private roads, but our responsibility is just to confirm that the road that they're proposing is on property that they're allowed to have it on?
Yes.
And that's all I'm trying to get at?
Yes. Perfect. Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
I have a question about siding of the development and then, and slopes. I think that I read in the findings that the development of the house and the barn are not on slopes greater than 25%. And I guess I just, I would like to confirm that.
So there's a small portion of the house and the barn that is on slopes, as you can see here, kind of on the north end and the south end of where the building development is. If you shift the proposed development north or south on this view in any direction, then you encroach into more development on slopes.
To follow up, I guess I'm not, I'm not interested in whether we shift it. It's whether we can avoid development on slopes altogether, as we've been kind of encouraging and requiring of other projects. And so I was, if you can point exactly to where it is on, this is a very modest, you know, plan, other than the fact that the barn is almost the same size as the house. And so
Okay, so this is a portion right here. And then this is a portion right here, down at the bottom.
Okay, so the current justification for this is that if we moved it, we would affect slopes more, but not necessarily that it's the least amount of, we've minimized, maybe I'll go back and read that, I'll read the finding myself to figure out what it says. And then I just have one other question unrelated, and that's regarding the water. And, I mean, it's the first single-family dwelling, so I'm not positive we have any say in this, but there's evidence that says that arsenic is, that the waters say in this, but there's evidence that says that arsenic is, that the water company is out of compliance because there's arsenic in the water. And I guess I'm just curious for more information about that.
Can we check to see if the Environmental Health Bureau is on Zoom to speak to this?
Hello, this is Kyler with the Environmental Health Bureau. I believe our supervisor for the drinking water program, Cheryl Sandoval, is in the, participating through Zoom, so if given permission, she can speak on that behalf.
Yes, she can go ahead.
Okay. Good morning. This is Cheryl Sandoval with Monterey County, as Kyler said. And yes, the water system that supplies water to this project is out of compliance with arsenic, and they are required to come back into compliance. And so there will need to be a compliant water system for the project or approved treatment.
If I can follow up with that, what does that look like? Is it something that happens at the project site, or is it something that happens from the water company?
For right now, the approved treatment would be at the water company. Yeah, I mean, that's what's allowed at this time, is the water company would need to have some sort of approved treatment.
Okay. Thank you. Can I go back to the...
Yes, Commissioner.
Sorry, thank you. The finding regarding slopes is finding five, and it's evidence B. And it says, "As proposed, there's no feasible alternative for the proposed development to incur entirely on slopes less than 25%." So I guess that's my, what I want to make sure we have correct, because I don't think that is a true statement at this point, because, you know, this project could be smaller if that were true. So just pointing that out for discussion, I guess, maybe later.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. Do you have some sort of, maybe aerial imagery, something that can give me an idea of where the leach field is in relation to the neighbor's house and their yard, just them in general?
So to start, this is the location of the leach field here. So this is the approximate area from a Google Earth view, where the leach field would be, right here.
So we don't, through the chair, we don't have anything more accurate. I mean, because my concern is that this is sloped downward towards the neighbor's houses, and that this was something that was brought up in the comment and the letters from the neighbors. I guess I'm wondering, when you're putting a leach field in, are the potential effects on neighboring properties taken into account when citing that? Or is that, the end of the concerns are at the property line?
A soils and percolation report was provided with the project application that does review groundwater monitoring and boring. That was included with the initial survey, and that was included with the project information that was reviewed by all of the departments, including environmental services that oversees the erosion control measures and hydrology.
Sorry, thank you, through the chair. So just because I'm having trouble understanding that, so maybe in layman's terms, they did look at the potential impacts to the neighbors by this leach field? Or did they just determine that this site was suitable for a leach field?
I believe it's more that they found that this site was more suitable for the leach field and may not have looked at from the neighbor's perspective.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Deal?
Just following up on that, because that had been one of my questions, based on the public comment as well. So the person who commenting, who the letter that we received discusses existing drainage coming down the hill into their property, and is, are we assuming that that's natural drainage over which nobody has any control? Or are we taking that existing condition into account when we look at what might be the result of constructing this home?
The staff was not aware of any existing drainage issues during review, so this would be considered a new condition if there is a concern for an existing drainage issue.
So I'm not looking at the conditions yet, because I haven't found them. So there's got to be an ordinary standard condition with respect to maintaining water on site. Could we have somebody look at whether that condition could include making sure that we weren't exacerbating any existing conditions for drainage onto the neighbors, which we now know about because it's on the record?
Through the chair, so it is a requirement for the project to have an erosion control plan that does address drainage issues and erosion issues during the duration of the project as well as afterwards, and that is included with the project. It will also be incorporated into the building permit process as well, and will be a part of the building set.
All right. So that appears to address that concern. Thank you very much.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And at this point, if either the property owner or the agent, if they're present, this would be the time to come and make your presentation.
Chairman, conditioners, my name is Ray Hara Jr., and I'm one of the applicants. I'm here to answer any of your questions. I think Hya did a great job in explaining this project. It's one of these few, I've been doing this for 40-some years, where the, kind of the land, the fire department, the environmental health department, and all the agencies kind of dictate how the project's going to be designed. It's not like you get to go do whatever you want to go do. Most of the development on the slopes of 25% is the driveway. We do nick some corners with the house and the barn, but it is surrounded by 25% slopes. So the getting access to it and pleasing the fire department is kind of designing the driveway. There's two somewhat flat areas on the property, one's higher than the other. That's where the house is, the slightly lower one, is where the septic system's going to go. There are setbacks from the property line for a septic leach field system, so that gives you that horizontal spacing between your neighbors. And then, what else we did, water quality. We have a new water board that took over from the old water board. The latest report, the latest test for the current quarter, after they did some repairs to the system and some cleaning, is below 10%. So this quarter's testing is in compliance. They're hoping to get three more, get their four quarters in, so that they will be in compliance, but they also have plans for, Amy's here from the water board, if you have any questions. $600,000, $600,000 in improvements for the water system to get it into compliance. This is, house has a condition that we're going to put an arsenic treatment on site at the house also, which is supposed to put it to one part per a billion. So it should be, the water in the house should be, no matter what the water we're getting up to the house, will be safe for use. And then, what else? Did we have any other questions I didn't address? Septic systems are designed to go, hopefully the water goes down is where it's supposed to go, so hence the lateral. They'll make the pipe deep enough and the channels deep enough with gravel to get the affluent low enough so that it goes down and not horizontal. And I'm here to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Does the commissioner, do the commissioners have any other questions? Commissioner Roberts?
I have a question about the slopes. It looks like one of the exceptions for the, outside of the driveway area, is maybe a retaining wall on the house side? Is that true? Or is it the actual house that is in the 25% slope?
I think it's just some clear area. You have to have, you know, can't have the house, you have to have, I think, a minimum of five feet of pad fill, structured fill, so you can put a retaining wall so you don't go out any farther. So there's a slight retaining wall to give you that five foot around the house. And also, back to drainage, this is a spine, this lot basically has a spine right down the center, so every time it rains, it flows off into everybody's property. It's just the way the natural topography is. There's preconstruction, postconstruction, any additional water we create with all our hardscape, nowadays, we almost just pipe it all in, and then you have to pipe it to a place where a creek bed down at the bottom of the hill or something, but you slowly collect all the water and dispose of it. You don't add additional runoff water. It's part of your construction management plan, and the new way of doing construction now is to either retention pond it, to hold it on site, and then divert it into channels culverts, so it goes somewhere where you're intending it to go, so it doesn't affect the neighbors.
One more. In regard to the slope in the barn, it looks like a corner of the barn is in the arid slope. And I'm wondering if you can tell me, was that, is the barn pushed off the house a certain amount of feet for a specific reason, or could it be moved just slightly?
PG&E. It's got to be away from the house to create an easement for PG&E between the house and the barn.
So is there, I guess, maybe, we can ask staff, or if you happen to know, is that, what that setback is and what it currently?
10 foot.
It's 10 foot?
10 foot.
This barn is 10 feet from the...
The garage.
From the garage, as required by PG&E? Okay. Thank you.
All right, sure.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, thank you.
All right, thank you.
With that, then, we continue with the public hearing. Is there anybody in the chambers, or anyone in the chambers that would like to address the commission on this particular item? Seeing not, if you are, then please come forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, and you have like three minutes to make your statements or your presentations. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy Pontius. I live at 104 Laguna Place, which is directly behind the proposed property, the proposed construction. One of my, I think you've already discussed about the leach field and the concerns about the drainage from that, since there have been already existing water issues on both my place when I purchased it and also my neighbor's place at 105, with the current existing water issues under the house. So I hope that that will be looked into. But another concern of mine is the driveway, the proposed driveway, is it possible to put the slide up? Has the site plan on it with the driveway? Anyway, no, previous one. Okay. So where the driveway goes up, and you can see where it curves, at the very top right-hand side, the driveway curves, that is really close to the property line, and my bedroom is really close to the property line on the other side. So my concern, like I said in my letter, I have a disability, so I have to spend more time in bed. This isn't going to be a problem for me because of, not only during construction, the noise, which construction may take six months or whatever, I'm not sure. And there are going to be a lot of trucks going around that corner where I am. So that's my concern. But even after the construction is over, with the property owners' own vehicles and trucks, work trucks, et cetera, that would still be a concern, not only as far as the noise, but also as far as lights, headlights. I would receive, I believe, the headlight going either direction on that driveway would be coming into my bedroom. So those are my concerns. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the commission? No? Thank you.
Does everyone up there have both, copies of both letters from myself and from James Jeffrey? Okay, all right.
Thank you. Next person?
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name's Jim Jeffrey. I'm representing Katie in some civil engineering matters related to the roadway. I'm a professional traffic engineer. Been practicing in Monterey County for 40 years, also a professional engineer, civil engineer, traffic engineer. I've probably done some work for Ray's father at one time. You've read my, hopefully you've read my emails, it turned out. Thank you, Hya, for the help she's given us. And I wanted to know, I didn't know that there was a three-minute timeframe. I can, first of all, answer any questions that you have. I also just noticed that the septic has been changed from the staff report that I reviewed a week ago. I'm not here to address that. I'm here to address the, what I call the private driveway easement. And just quickly to show you the attached plan, which is based on a survey map, Ms. Pontius's property is shown in, you don't see it in black, but it's called parcel B, and the private roadway easement, which Mr. Hara would have to be driving across, and also, of course, Brent drives across, is green, but is solid in the northern corner of that. So, let's see, to synopsize, she's the only one that's, that has the easement going completely across her property, so it affects her property directly, and we're concerned about, and the private easement driveway right now is only 11-foot. His driveway is proposed to be 12. I have concerns about the width of the driveway and safety issues. I'm a forensic traffic engineer. I get involved in accidents, hopefully not personally, but I get involved professionally in traffic accidents, and I like to try to, as much as I can, try to take care of things before they happen. I'm not saying that an accident's going to happen, but there's two blind curves and only basically one way in and one way out. And right now, Brent and Denise are the only people using that driveway, and, which is maybe fine, but with another set of vehicles operating on it, it's still a one-way road, and it needs to be widened for fire safety and for driving safety. And by the way, I'm used to having more information in front of me before I make a presentation. I'm surprised that, you can cut me off whenever you want me to, whenever you want me to.
You wrap it up in about 20 seconds.
I'm surprised that more hasn't been done before this time, but I understand that's done at the building permit. done at the building permit time. I'm just not used to it. And if you have any questions of a civil engineer, traffic engineer, engineering contractor, actually, as well, you can ask me now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
You referenced a map, which I believe is a map that we have in front of us. We don't have colors on it, and if yours has colors on it, I'm just wondering if you'll put it on the overhead so we can see the difference in what you were-
I can explain it more easily than that.
Okay.
The thick dark, dark, the thick, black lines on there are parcel B, and it has a 14, which is meaningless, but 14 in the middle of it, and that's Ms. Pontius' parcel, fee simple parcel, and, or the part that's on that side of Laguna Place. And the thick, dark is the driveway easement, and you can see the easement on either side that crosses only her property, and there is easement from, with people sharing parcels adjacent to it, sharing the easement from Laguna Place through her parcel to, to what's shown as parcel C and parcel D. By the way, the subject parcel is parcel C.
Okay.
With that, thank you for your presentation. And again, any other persons here that would like to address the commission? You have about three minutes. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Brent Riker. I live at 103 Laguna Place, and I'm the person, my wife and I would be using the driveway as well as the applicant. Part of the charm in our house is that driveway, we come up through that driveway, and there's trees that grow over it. And I'd like to leave as much of it as I can alone. If you need to do something for safety, if there needs to be a build-out, I think Greg and I talked about one at the base of his driveway, which could use, be used as a dual purpose. But as much of the driveway could be left alone, it'd be better, because I have trees that grow right next to it, and I don't want to lose them. So if you do have to widen it, on one side would be better than the other. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Time for a quick clarification?
Yes. Go ahead.
He was referring to the parcel map that I sent you. We're talking about, there's two, there's a driveway that's on the site we're building on.
Can you get the mic a little-
There's a driveway, the 12-foot driveway, that's going to be completely on the parcel that we're going to be building on to access the house. Now, they're talking about the private roadway easement that was, you know, created when they put the, they developed these lots. There's a private 30-foot roadway easement that these other lots get access to. It's been there since Mrs. Pontius owned her lot. The easement's always been there, and so it is designed for parcel C and D to access their parcels. And so only C and D are going to use it. Ms. Pontius leaves the easement, the private road, immediately when you go onto it. She goes up to her house. This goes around her property because she's on a knoll, and it's a private road, and it's, was built to whatever standards they allowed back then, and we, the ones that used us, Brent and us, we like the way the road is. It's, it's small, it's charming, we putt down it, we go slow. Yes, during construction, there'll be additional construction traffic, but afterwards, they allow, what, 10 trips per a home? So it'll be 20 trips theoretically on that road per day, and so let's say there's a 12-hour window, so it's a little over one and a half cars, or a little under one and a half cars per hour are going to access that road. And so it's talking about something that is existing and not in our project. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. And with that, we bring it back to staff for any comments, clarifications.
Staff has no comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you, then. We bring it back to the planning commission, and for any comments, questions, clarifications. Commissioners? Commissioner Deal?
No, Commissioner Roberts has her hands up. I was just going to, wanted to comment, which is, it's really nice to have a project where people have taken such note of the existing requirements and designed to them. I just find that refreshing and encouraging. So that's, my comment is, thank you for a project that actually takes into account the challenges of the space and designs to the rules, and something that you can look at and say, yeah, that makes sense. That's all.
Thank you. I just was reminded that I skipped a step here, so during the public hearing, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails that would like to address this particular project?
Thank you, Chair. No, there are no hands up on Zoom and no additional emails.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for reminding me. With that, we continue with the commission. Commissioner Deal?
I did have a couple things, further things on my note here. One of them was, I do note the discussion of the drainage issues, that this project won't make anything worse, it won't solve existing drainage problems in other people's property, but it will not make it worse according to its conditions. The driveway, as we talked about at the beginning, will be entirely constructed on the driveway easement that currently exists, so that rooting is not in question here, particularly the portion of the private road that's not on there. And I just got to make a plea to the county in general, can we not name anything else with the word quail in it for a while? Man, everything in the county has quail. It's real confusing. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you. For my own clarification, again, using the parcel map that we've referred to, there's access from Laguna Place to this parcel. And we've talked about, I can see it on this map, it looks like it comes from Laguna, it goes along the property line of parcel A and parcel B, through or either at the edge of parcel B, and then through parcel D to get to parcel C. And I'm, my clarification question is, this project, the driveway construction, is that on parcel D? Or is that, everything we're talking about is parcel C? Or is it the whole length of the road? That's my clarification question.
Can we share HTMI and stuff, right? Okay, so this is the portion here from between parcel A and parcel B, follows the lines of the two properties. This is where it cuts through, and then it continues to follow the line of the two properties. So here, the easement is split between parcel C and parcel D comes around, and right about where my cursor is, is where the private driveway will start. So this, this right here, this denotes an older property line from a lot line adjustment, I believe it was. So the proposed driveway that was shown on the site plan would start right about here and is included all within parcel C.
Okay. Thank you. That is an important clarification to me. And then, the other, the other thing, going back to the development on slopes, if we could just clean up the language in finding five evidence B, the, as I said before, it currently says there's no feasible alternative for the proposed development. I mean, even if we said it, that, something that the site has been constructed to form within as much of the non-sloped area as possible, and then if we could somehow specifically state that one of the pieces is a retaining wall, and that the other piece is whatever amount of land it actually is, or square feet it actually is, to accommodate the PG&E requirements, that would be important to me to clarify, because I think it is a very small amount on slopes. And so if we said this is 200 square feet, or, you know, whatever the square footage is, instead of that we're just allowing development on slopes, that would, or at least in terms of the siding, I understand that the driveway, and then actually also specify that the driveway is the 98% of, you know, whatever, whatever that actually is. That would be helpful to me.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a request for the future. I have had so much difficulty conceptualizing where these moving parts, these parts are within the neighborhood, and so I would love to have some sort of overlay showing, when stuff comes up that the neighbors are bringing up issues that are arising for them, I would love to have some sort of visual to show me the actual location of like, their homes, the property lines, where the actual road is, would be super helpful in the future, because I just now, through Commissioner Roberts' line of questioning, figured out where everything is. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Mendoza?
Just briefly, on the tree removal, I know there's 49 trees that are proposed to be removed. On condition number eight, is it possible for some of those trees to be planted in the vicinity of what the other ones are removed? And the only reason I ask that is I know that there's several of them that are being removed due to the grading, so I don't know if that's a possibility.
I believe we can work with the arborist to find locations for replantings, and there's that portion. Can you share stuff, right? So this, this portion right here is heavily wooded, so we definitely want to make sure that we're not creating a situation where overcrowding is happening with the trees, and then the new trees that we're planting are not going to be successfully able to become mature plants or mature trees. So we can work with the arborist on that part.
Any other Commissioner Deal?
I don't know. If there are no further questions, I guess Commissioner Mendoza didn't get a chance to say whether that addressed his concerns. He's nodding his head, yes, so that's-
Yes, it does. Thank you.
With respect to Commissioner Shaw's concerns, I think to some extent Commissioner Roberts, can I make a plea for consistent orientation? So that whatever, whatever information we get to do with location, it's either all in the same orientation, or it has really clear indications of what orientation it is. So I think that is probably the confusing part of this for me. So that's just a request to staff. But that being said, I'd like to propose, I propose approving this recommendation as recommended by staff with the changed language regarding slope that is, has been proposed by Commissioner Roberts.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Deal. Is there a second? Commissioner Mendoza seconds the motion. Any further questions, comments, clarifications, discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And then, let me see, we move on to the next item on the agenda. If, do we have any other matters? So we don't have any other matters at this point, so we move to department report.
My notes were messy, I believe. I just had one update I wanted to make. I wanted to let the commission and the public know that the Housing Community Development Department is in the process of getting our second draft of the six-cycle housing element update posted for the required seven-day review, which would then be sent subsequently to the state for their second 60-day review. Our target is to have that posted today, and we will inform through our email blasts and social media, et cetera, to let folks know that seven-day review period is open, and then it'll go subsequently to the state. I believe that's all staff had.
Thank you. With that, do we have any public comment on department report? Anybody on Zoom or any emails on department report?
There are no hands up on Zoom and no new emails.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned at 11:20 a.m. Thank you very much. I wish everybody a wonderful rest of the day.